It is five o'clock on April the sixth, and we are here for a budget work session. This time I'd ask everybody that is capable to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the first order of business is an update from the city assessor. Ms. Bogart.
Yes, so we have a full agenda tonight, but we'll get through it and take your questions, and then we'll follow up at the next work session, which will be during the regular council work session next week on April thirteenth. So we'll start off tonight with Mr. Charlie Haney, who will provide. There's been some questions that came in about the assessment generally, and he'll provide an update on that. And then we had talked about a few changes that might occur in the future as far as appeal requests and things like that. So I'm gonna let Mr. Haney take the mic.
Welcome. Thank you. Good morning or afternoon, evening. So my name's Charles Haney. I'm the city assessor. I understand there were questions about the process and what's been going on with the reviews. Currently, well, currently at the point, the appeals period is, has been finished, is finished. We fielded about two hundred and thirty calls or inquiries about assessments and requests for appeals. We have reviewed seventy-five of those that requested appeals. Those are the number that requested, requested appeals. We changed about seventy-two of those. That, that represents about two percent of the total assessments that we sent out as far as calls, inquiring about the assessments. The change is on assessments ranged anywhere from, obviously, no change to, but by and large, from about a percent, one point three percent, all the way up to forty-four percent. On a rare few assessments, the average change was eight percent of those. We sent out twenty-seven forms, board of equalization forms. So of those who called, twenty-seven requested a form, or those that we actually reviewed still wanted a, a further review of their assessments. So twenty-seven forms went out and we had twelve returned. There's still some reviews we're working on, a small number of them, and those people will be given thirty days to appeal as well after our, our determination has been made. So it's been a fairly typical reassessment, a little bit of it kind of fast and furious for a while. But in general, it's typical reassessment, whether it's a minus three percent or a plus twenty-five percent. We get roughly the same number of calls. We may have had five percent more this time than, than normal. So that's the rundown. We gave back, I won't say gave back, we reduced assessments by totally, so far, by a million and thirty thousand dollars. So right now, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Charlie?
Yes.
Some questions that came out during the time that Ms. Woods and I, Council, Council Lady Woods and I had, had a town hall. Wanted to know, first of all, they didn't feel that there was a, a very open type of procedure, that they understood how you arrived at, are, are you basing it off of a state process? Or guidelines? How do you get there? Another feeling was that, you know, basically, nobody gets a process where they, somebody goes into their house and looks at that house. It's just like, okay, that's a two-story house, or it's a three-story house, or whatever. And maybe we're assuming that there's three bathrooms in there, whatever, maybe there's not, we don't know. I know one comment, lady happens to be here tonight, said that there needed to be a more fair process so that there could be a fair evaluation of that house so that they could then possibly purchase that house. I'm talking about in the future, or whatever, and then have the ability to bring that house up to standards or better. And, and, you know, just basically helping somebody out there. There, there just doesn't seem to be an understanding of what you do in your job. And I think I would love to hear that, and I'm sure the citizens would love to hear it. How do you arrive at the numbers you come up with?
Okay. I'm not sure I understand all of that, but let me address what I do, and if you have a follow-up. Any call that comes in, the, surely the first thing we do, we try to explain the appeals process, which in fact is also on everyone's assessment notice, comes out, tells you, you know, what to do to contest your assessment deadlines and so forth. Then the next thing, we'll try to explain what's happened, what's happened with sales in the city, because it's, it's mandated that we're at fair market value. So we try to discuss the sales that we have that in the city, but more specifically down to everyone's neighborhood. So if you're in neighborhood twelve, we're gonna pull up, you, you'll be routed to the appraiser that, or assessor that did neighborhood twelve, and we'll go over the sales in those neighborhoods. The general trends in your neighborhood. So I like to tell, find out what neighborhoods you're in. I'll tell people what was the increases in the say pool of sales, and then how they stood up against the increase in the whole neighborhood. And then we do, we ask people, we've asked people, what is informing their opinion of value? And, you know, it's, it's different with everybody, it's a conversation. If people talk about the condition of the house, we always allow for, or give people the option of letting us come to the property and look at the property. Especially if someone says, my house isn't worth this much because it's dated, or it's in, you know, it's worse than dated, it's in bad condition. First thing we'll do then is invite, if you'll let us, we'll come and review the property. I don't have the exact number on, on it, but probably of the seventy-five that we looked at, I, I'm, I'm sure we looked at at least half of those, I mean, going to the house and visiting. Some people won't let us in the house, and then there's really nothing we can do as far as looking at the house in that fashion. So that is a general process. We always, we go in on the sales and we, and we tell people what the sales were in the neighborhood. I always pull up the person's property record card, so I'm making notes. I'm trying to find in that pool of sales, ones that are close in characteristics to your house, as best as we can.
One follow-up. Because I reckon the other thing is if people are, depending on when these assessments were done, because if they were done seven, eight, nine months ago, when, when the real estate market was going through the roof and you'd list a house and it was sold that afternoon or a couple of days later, that ain't the case now, not when it's headed down.
Well, I would disagree with that.
You would disagree with that. I had a feeling you would, but.
We, we look at the sales that take place from the last reassessment up until January one. So we're looking at all of them. I'm paying particular attention to the ones that took place in the latter parts of twenty-two. The courts have told us that we have to be accurate on our effective date. So while this is a big pool of sales we use, in, if, I need to be accurate on January one of two thousand and twenty-three. That's my effective date. Even today, so we've been tracking sales since January the first of this year. We are, the average sale is, has been six and a half percent higher than our assessment as of January one. I've checked around other jurisdictions and their experience is still about the same. So, you know, the number may be slowing, the days on market may be, the number of sales, the days on market may be slowing, but we are seeing no slowing or lowering of the sales prices that are taking place in comparison to our assessments.
Mr. Haney, when, you said you had about two hundred and twenty persons that questioned their price value?
About, about two thirty.
Two thirty, yeah, okay. Do you have a, a form, a standardized form that is utilized? Do we have a log that is utilized so that any, anybody that calls into your office gets the same treatment? And is there a checklist that's involved, like, do you, do you ask everybody if you want your crew to go and do a, a personal visit at the house, whether they'd be admitted into the house, et cetera? And are they interested in following up with the, going to the board of the appraisers, you know, for, for a follow-up? Is everyone treated the same and given the same form with the same checklist?
I've been doing this a long time, and so has our, the appraiser in our office. We don't have a checklist, but I run through the same scenario with everybody. There has been some, and, and I've looked at over, over the years, kind of evaluating whether or not to use a, a form or to push out a form for people to use to do their appeals. Some jurisdictions do, some don't. I think there's pros and cons to using the form. We've tried to make it somewhat easy and casual for people to be able to call in, not so formal. Like I said, we, I've looked at using forms. Generally speaking, a lot of times people don't want to fill out the form. We, I mean, so we sent out, at a little bit more serious level, we sent out twenty-seven BOE forms, board of equalization forms, and we only received half, less than half of those back. In everybody's forms that I've seen, there, everybody wants, or everybody, all jurisdictions seem to want, you know, those reasons for your appeal. Do, do you think it's not equitable? So we're gonna ask you for information, the same kind of stuff I do when I talk to people. Do you think it's over fair market value and, and why? And give us some sales that you see in the neighborhood that you think would make you think your assessments are too high? I mean, we're supposed to be at market value.
And I agree with that. I'm just saying, if you had two hundred and thirty persons that originally questioned, and then we only go to seventy-five properties, you know, that, that we actually do an adjustment on, obviously, two-thirds of them conceded that your, your number was, was valid. And, and then if you issued twenty-seven more offers to go to the board of equalization, and only half of them are interested, again, your validity is being justified. And all I'm saying is, it might help if we have this form so that you can come back to it next time we have to do this process and say, these are the numbers. I mean, and, and you, you're definitely, we, we definitely want to listen to every citizen.
Sure.
And, and I know when I pull mine out of my envelope, you know, it's like, I think it's too high myself. But as, you know, when you start reading it and realizing that we're talking January first, and, and this is what it is, and I think the fact that the houses that have sold so far in, in two thousand and twenty-three have been at six and a half percent above the assessed value. That obviously points out the fact that assessed value is pretty true. So I'm, I mean, you're always gonna have exceptions, but I, I, I just think the more documentation, the more standardization you have, the more forms you have, the more that you can refer back to afterwards, the more validity is, is, comes to your office.
Well, again, we've, we've looked at those, and I've talked to Leslie a little bit. I think we, I probably are gonna go to a forum at least. And we're gonna try to do it within this year or so. For in the off-year, there are still appeals, new assessments that go out to people with building permits or property line changes. So anything like that that changes someone's assessment, they'll get a notice, they get a chance to appeal that assessment. So it'd be a good year to pilot a program to try to tweak a form that would be helpful to us and helpful to the public. So we are talking about doing that. Yeah, and, and so of, I will say, a lot of those calls are, are people that just, they don't know how this whole thing works. And of course, we have people appealing their assessments even, let's say, after they bought the house. So, I mean, that's one of the things that we plugged into our model to come up with these rates, and yet they're upset about a change, a large change, as it would be. And even though we're still probably underneath of their sale. So a, a lot of it is question, how, how do you do this? The same question some, some of you were asking, how does this work? How do you value land? How do you, you know, all those things? And so a lot of those aren't, you know, we don't call them appeals. If someone's still, is still somewhat protesting, saying that, I don't think you're right, then we're glad to do it. Because what it does, anytime we can get in a house or to view sales a little more deeply than we do during the reassessment, we know more about that house, and it, it's, I call it scrubbing data. So when a sale comes through, we're gonna look at that sale, was it arm's length? How long was it on the market? All the details. Inevitably, we will correct data at that point when something's on the market or has just sold. We find out basements are finished, we, our bathroom counts are wrong. So that, all of that allows us a chance to get better data. So, and I guess somewhat what you're saying, hopefully better the next time, because we don't have to scrub the data so hard. And so the appeals are the same way.
Mr. Haney, I, I would fully support doing a form like that, because a lot of people I've talked to have just sort of had a feeling that their assessment wasn't quite right, but had difficulty explaining exactly why. And I mean, to you, you're working it every day, and you're talking about comparable properties, that kind of thing. And very, I, I think, you know, perhaps, you know, you're often right in the, in the valuation of these houses, but I think it would help with understanding, definitely, on that. And, and so you modified, how many, did you say, seventy-two, seventy-five?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Were modified, yeah.
Okay, and then two hundred something calls, did a lot of these people just say, oh, you're right, in the end, after you explained it to them?
Yeah, we do, we do. People come in the office, they email us, we get that a lot.
Okay.
You know, a lot of people are surprised, I didn't know that stuff was selling, I can't, you know. But, and, and that, that to me, that's what we're trying to do, is inform people.
At the very least, I think it would help with understanding and, and help people with the process of it, because they don't swim in this every day. I know I don't.
Yeah, and it might, because, right, it's gonna force them to go look for comps, you know, just like when they, a lot of people call and say, I have no idea, you know, how did this go up so much? And when we point to sales, they don't know it happened, and I get that.
And you were, and you were saying, you know, providing comparable properties at lower values, it could be a good argument. And then what other items, like specific items about the house that might be listed wrong, saying you have a finished basement and you don't? Or what other reasons have you, have you?
Yeah, bathroom counts, basement finishes are big ones. Mostly I'm, it's the other way around. I look at a sale and it's, it's, we're way under it, and it's probably because something's happened to it, we don't know. There's, but those, those are common things. We will, anytime we go out and look at a house, we'll re-measure it, because who knows the last time it was re-measured? So we, we want to make sure our information's correct. So those, those are big things, and probably the biggest one is condition. I went to one last, a couple of weeks ago, one was, a house was bought on auction, and even the owner hadn't been in it, didn't know what it looked like, but thought this was a big increase. And so last week, we were able to get in it, it was, we were definitely way off. But, and so we lowered that one, that was one of the big decreases, because it was in horrible shape. So condition and updates, upgrades are usually it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Anyone else, members of council?
I could, one, do you have any idea how many homes are for sale at this moment in town?
I, I don't, but I, I do know there were a couple of weeks we looked when there were like a very small number, like maybe ten or twenty-five added to the list, which was already pretty lean, so.
And that affects, that affects costs all over town, really, doesn't it, because of, you know, people trying to buy them?
Yeah.
Terry?
Yeah, supply and demand issues, yeah, absolutely.
Can we, Maggie's shaking her head, she obviously knows what the answer is.
On Monday this week, with the exception of proposed new construction, there were twenty-one units on the market.
Wow. That's nothing.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one.
Wow.
And, and of course, those, you know, we're not looking at the, of course, we track the sales for our own, you know, edification or, or, but in, in those that will be happening from the January one on will be ones we'll consider next time. But yeah, so it's, the supply's still tight.
All right, any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Haney.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, can we take a five-minute break? I, somehow, there was an email that Ms. Edwards sent about participating on Zoom, and I'm not sure what happened, email was not working right this morning, she would like to come on Zoom. And so she sent me another email, so can we take a, just a quick break, a five-minute break, so that Mr. Kessler and I can pull that together and call her in? Okay, yeah, let's just take a five-minute break, and then we can get the script and everything.
See the request from Counselor Edwards to participate remotely in the April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three city council budget work session due to a personal matter that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask for Counselor Edwards to state the personal matter which makes her unable for her to attend tonight's meeting. Michelle, we're not hearing you, are you on mute? Michelle, can you hear us? Would you like to try to call her again, get the number, see if we can arrange something?
Just called her a second ago, but let me call her one more time.
Yeah, I was gonna go back to point number two and let. Do number two. Number two on the agenda tonight is major general fund revenue comparison in history. And normally at this time, I'll call Ms. Bogart, but I'll gladly defer to Ms. Jesse.
All right, thank you. Kylie, did you want to put up the PDF? Okay, so the first item that I'm gonna walk you through this evening is major revenue comparisons. This is, I'm gonna compare sales, meals, and lodging tax, business license, and personal property tax. The one-page summary I provided shows actuals from FY eighteen to FY twenty-two, a projected number for FY twenty-three, and what we're proposing in our FY twenty-four budget. Budgeting revenue is more of a prediction than an actual calculation, so it's not an exact science. It's a team effort here at the City of Stanton. Our revenue team consists of the city manager, assistant city manager, the assessor, the treasurer, the commissioner of revenue, and myself. We have met on multiple occasions to discuss our approach to budgeting these specific line items in addition to other revenue lines. We set these budgets while keeping in mind historical results, potential growth, and market trends. Sales, meals, and lodging tax are budgeted very close to actual results for FY twenty-two. We did not feel confident enough in what we were seeing in the first half of twenty-three to budget twenty-three at those rates. It's more common to budget based on the last actual full-year results or an average of the last couple fiscal years. We feel that based on what we're hearing in the news, that there is a market slowdown in our future. However, to what extent and when that will happen is not clear at this point. The proposed budget for the business license revenues have been increased by a hundred and fifty thousand to a total of two point four million in the proposed budget. The last item in this particular discussion is personal property revenue. We're increasing the budget here by three hundred and forty-five thousand. However, even though the budget has been increased, we are projecting the actual, the, the budget for twenty-four is gonna be about five hundred thousand less than what the actual revenue was for twenty-three. And this is due to the normalization of used car prices after the global pandemic. While we know the used car values are declining, what we don't know exactly is where they'll be when it comes time to set those values next year. Like I mentioned, budgeting revenues is a prediction that depends on multiple variables, many of which are out of our control. It's also an area where we're very careful not to over-budget. We try to get as close as possible, but in the end, any excess revenue that come, that comes in is gonna be used for the city's capital plan the following fiscal year. If we find ourselves in a position where we've over-budgeted, then we're left scrambling, trying to determine whose budget we need to cut to offset this. So as you can imagine, that's not a great position to be in. At this time, I want to pause and see if you have any questions or feedback when.
Can we go right to the meals tax? The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three actual was six million, two hundred and twelve thousand?
That is a projected number, yes.
And, and where are we now?
If we finish out the year the way we started the year, we will end up at six point two million dollars. And Maggie is here tonight to speak about some of these.
The budget is five, three, five, eight?
It's for this year, in FY twenty-four, we're projecting five point seven, eight, five.
An increase, so in other words, we're going to increase from, in the budget, from five, three to five, seven?
Yes.
An increase of four hundred thousand?
Yes.
But that's still another four hundred thousand less. But that's still another 400,000 less than what we are right now in this year.
Where we're going to be projected to be, yes.
That's a penny and a half.
Yep. So there's, there's about $400,000 that is going to be there as long, where, where we are now, based on the projection, right?
That is correct.
And a penny is how much? Two eighty seven?
About, yes.
You agree that's a penny and a half?
Yes, I do. And we're trying to predict next year, though.
Can we go back to the last two years? And can we say that we had six and a half million dollar overage in 22?
Yeah, those numbers are right there on the budget variance line comparing to actuals to budget.
And how much do you forecast we're going to be over in 23?
Uh, right now it's running at about 854,000.
And has, have things slowed down since January 1? How much?
We're seeing, we are seeing some slowdown, the majority of what you, the increase that you've seen in meals tax. First of all, when we budgeted for the last cycle, when we were, you know, basically in the height of the pandemic, we did dip those budgets down because we had no idea what was going to happen. Nobody had any idea of the surge that, that with which things were going to come back. We're seeing, as far as meals is concerned, we're seeing a little bit of a slowdown. The, the majority of the gains you've got here are inflationary gains. We've got a little bit of gain from a couple of new outlets or newer outlets that have gone in at the crossing and we're still expecting one more at the Frontier Center within the next fiscal year. So it, it wouldn't be unreasonable to, to, to expect that these trends were going to continue. But inflation wise, there's no way to know. We're seeing, and Terry, you might even be able to speak to it, but we are seeing some, some slowdowns gradually in the volumes, but not necessarily in the prices. So I don't really know.
Prices are actually are going up, you know, and maybe, you know, we're taking in more tax because we're just charging more for the same item that last year was a little bit cheaper. You know, it's just, and that could be making up some of it. Our sales, we're busy, but they have fallen off compared to what they were. And from what I hear.
At what time, since January?
First week of January was pretty busy because I think a lot of people were still out of work, but it, yeah, it settled down. We've just been lucky, we haven't had any bad weather.
Uh, yeah. But we, we've had a good winter. Right now we're looking probably at about 6%. We're trending about 6% down month to month on month from last to this year. And so that's, to me, that's a volume decrease, not because the price, all of the gains are inflationary.
Okay, well, let's talk about sales tax second then. We're, uh, the budget for 24 is.
Five point five.
Five point five versus 5.275 million in the, and, and we've already exceeded that this year with a 5.896.
That is using projections, using the first six months of data and projecting out the rest of the year. So that's not an actual figure.
Again, where are the trends and is this going to hold up? And how, how recently?
Question.
How recently was this figure?
If you don't mind me, I'm, if you don't mind me jumping.
No, go ahead.
Sales tax data is, is old data because it takes 60, almost 90 days for us to get. So the last thing we have is end of 22. For that information, we don't get, it'll be middle of this month before I get January, in other words. So we don't, we can't keep up with it as, as closely as the data that we hold in-house. I would say that we were probably going to continue to trend higher in sales tax than we did last year. What we have in sales tax, and then you're going to see me voice the same thing again in business license is we've got a lot of penalty money where people didn't pay. And they are now paying penalty, hefty penalties. And so that was kind of a.
Are they paid up or is this an ongoing issue we're going to have to worry about?
It's, we're, it is an ongoing issue with business license, local business license. And that's part of what gives me pause to say that, you know, that these sales and, and, and revenue things are going to just continue to climb. If we've got a situation where very large entities are not filing and paying on time. And that's, like I said, we've got that same issue with both sales tax and business license right now. I think there's probably going to be some growth in sales tax, and I think there's probably going to be some growth in business license. But to, to project that the type of trend that we have been seeing is going to continue and not ever level off is probably not realistic.
What is city councils? Best bet to pursue to, to help you out in this matter? I mean, how can, I mean, if we know there's an issue and there's a problem, what is the best thing we can do to resolve it?
As, as far as late payments and penalties and that sort of thing? That's all done, that's all done through the courts. It's not anything, I mean, that, that's, that's a me, a me issue. I work very closely with the Department of Taxation representative that covers our area and, and we, we help each other out in those terms.
I mean, are there any of them that are over two years old?
Oh, no, 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 no. But when, when I talk about penalty money being part of this, I'm talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
Well, I, I thought that.
Yeah.
So how?
So there.
How current are we, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is there anything we can do to help bring some of those funds in? I mean, is there anything we need to be involved in?
I mean, that's all, it's a, it's, that's all, it's all, you know, court resolved as far as the Department of Taxation. And like I said, I work with them. If we have issues with a specific business, then, then we work together to bring them into the court situation and resolve it.
Could you give us a percentage of people that are out of, they're not, is, is it?
I hate to say at this point, we, you know, we are in April now, just for example. Our business license is due March 1st. We have of the 23, approximate 2,300 business licenses, I've still got over 500 outstanding. Yeah, and that's.
March 1st estate date, Maggie?
And, yeah.
That's a 20%.
So it's, it, yeah, it's unusual. And that's, that's what gives me pause to say, yes, all these revenues are going to continue climbing. I'll give you a couple of other notes before I turn it back over to Jesse, if that's okay with you.
Please.
Lodging tax, we have seen some increases. I believe I've mentioned with you all before that there's been a change in the way short term rentals are administered. And so we are seeing an increase in those revenues from those folks who were neglecting to share those with us previously. Now that we're getting the money directly from platforms like Airbnb and Verbo, et cetera. So we are, we are going to see some climb in that, but I don't have enough data yet to, to really project it out. I am seeing a shrinking in the number of people who are listing their properties on those platforms. But I'm seeing increased volume to the ones that remain. So I don't have a good enough handle on that to tell you where lodging is going to go. But I should with, you know, I mean, it's just unfortunate that we're doing a budget we have to do right now. Six months from now can give you a whole lot better answer on that. Business license, you, the penalty piece of it is, is significant, but it's not as significant as looking at the types of projects that we have going on. So when you look at major construction projects, we look for business license to have a significant increase. When those projects go away, it's gone. So, you know, we had several years of, of inflated revenues because of the project of, of the high school. But that's gone now and, and, and it's, you know, it may be replaced by another large project, but we don't know that at this point. So I don't like to look at business license as something that you can say definitively that we know that the same exact businesses are going to be having the same type revenues each year from year to year because we have things that come and go from the city. So that's why we have some pretty, pretty large fluctuation for this next fiscal year. If we get a big project in, that might go up, it might go up by several hundred thousand dollars. We don't know, but we don't like to say that we are budgeting for that revenue and we don't have any definite plans on the books for those types of projects. And that's, that's pretty much it. If you have any other questions about these revenues, Jesse does a great job, but I'm probably just a little bit more intimately involved with him. So I'm happy to answer questions.
My only comment is going to be on the lodging tax. Everything I'm reading nationwide says that more and more people are coming out after the COVID crisis and they are spending more and more nights. And occupancy rates of all these hotels are, have been positive.
Yeah, yeah, the trends, the Smith Travel Research, which is the firm that looks at average rates and occupancy for hotels, and we follow that. They are, they are seeing increases where we look for increased revenue that affects multiple categories. Meals, lodging, sales and business licenses and entities like the Hotel 24 South where their, their, you know, conference revenue coming back is what they need. And that's, that's something that, you know, people usually book a year out. So I don't think, we haven't seen the bump in that type of, of revenue. They're, they're, they're going to come back, they'll come back strong, but, but it's a lagging thing. So, uh, yes, we are seeing increases in Airbnb. We are seeing increases at the, at the interstate level, you know, just kind of the pass through customer. Most definitely, we're, we're seeing increases there. But again, I don't feel like I have enough data to say, you know, it's going to be this percent or that percent over time.
I've been to the Tourism Advisory Board the last three, three months, and it's a good board. And, and they're real positive about the fact that the, the lodging is, is here. And it's been a steady increase and they're, they're very pleased and their rates are way up. So that's an encouragement.
It is, and there are also, if you look, there are some, some other units that they're not coming into our market. But if you go, if you look at Harrisonburg and Waynesboro, there's other units coming online. That also ha, always has an effect, you know, the total number of rooms available in the market. Don't know if that'll affect us or not directly.
Questions?
I'll still, I'll stick around if you need anything else. Thank you.
I'm just curious, you know, with, they're predicting oil prices, gas prices to go way up because of what?
Saudi Arabia.
Yeah. And that always affects travel.
If, it'll affect travel in a negative way, but it'll affect business license in a positive way because it's based on gross receipts. So you, you know, again, that's why I love my job.
It's a moving target. All right, back to Jesse.
I am done with this session. This, this, this agenda item.
I just had one question, if you don't mind, Jesse. Do you have an idea what all this adds up to as a, for the projections for 2024? From just this revenue from these items?
Yes.
What would, what would be plus?
For 24?
Yeah.
Oh, the additional ones?
Yeah, what, just projections.
Projecting 24?
Yeah, you, you said you got down here, you said we were already ahead on these items.
For 23? Are you looking at the increase from 23 to 24?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Let's see.
Were we looking around about a million and a half or something like that or? I'm sorry.
I think it's about a million. Let me just check. Other local taxes is one of about almost 1.2 million dollars from FY 23 to 24.
I think it's a very valid point here. That's, that's the number we need to know.
So what did you say that was again?
Um, other local taxes, the FY 24 projected budget is 1,167,670 above the FY 23 budget.
On a good day, then that would be about four cents.
Yeah, on a good day.
A good year, yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Any other questions? Ms. Beauregard?
I'll move on to the next section.
And before we go, do we hear any more from Michelle?
No, she's just going to listen. She's having, she's actually on the road and she's having difficulty. So she said she was just going to listen.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so we're, we're good. Thank you.
Hey, Michelle, we're sorry about this.
We're sorry, I told her.
I'm sorry.
Okay, here we go.
I couldn't listen to this and drive.
I didn't ask who was driving. Another person is driving.
So next I'm going to walk you through an overview of the FY 24 proposed budget and hit a few highlights and hopefully answer some of your questions that you may have along the way. As a reminder, the total budget for, that we're projecting for FY 24 for all funds is 152,355,651. That's a 6.6% increase over FY 23. The general fund portion of that, which is the one that we're mainly interested in, and we talk a lot about, is 69,264,351, an increase of 4.1 million dollars or 6.2%. The next slide is a summary of our local contribution to this city schools. This is our first budget cycle using the new agreed upon school funding formula. The FY 24 proposed school contribution is almost 6, 16 million dollars, which 905,000 of that is, that's higher than last year's contribution, which equals 6.01% increase for them. Um, it is just the first year using this formula, but I do believe it's working and we've hopefully found a solution that takes the guesswork out of what our local contribution will be to our schools. The school funding formula does rely heavily on property taxes. 26.559% of all real estate and personal property taxes are allocated to schools for each of the two fiscal years. This equates to 53% of our property taxes are allocated to our schools when you add those two fiscal years together. The fact that this formula relies heavily on property taxes means that it's a fairly stable number that our schools can depend on. But it also means that growth for future fiscal years using this formula depends on growth in the property tax revenues. Slide four is an overview of our general fund revenues. That second line there, that other local tax revenue, a lot of the ones that we just went through were in that line. And that's where you'll see the 1.167 million dollar increase from 23 to 24. So overall, our revenues are going up a little over 4 million dollars. That's that bottom line number. The amounts in red indicate a decrease in revenues, and I want to direct your attention to the bottom line, the miscellaneous line that decreased a little over a million dollars. This is a result of the FY 23 adopted budget using a $400,000 transfer from our health fund balance and $607,000 from the general fund unrestricted fund balance to balance the budget for last year or the year we're currently in. These two items are not currently in our proposed 24 budget, and that's why you're seeing that decrease.
Everybody understand it? Question?
No.
Yeah, I think that's, that's.
Explain.
Yes, so, um, in FY 23, when the budget was being put together, there, um, there was a line item to take $400,000 from the health fund. That is the fund that the city's health insurance has run through for the, the city and the schools and use $400,000 of that to transfer over to the general fund to help pay for general fund expenses. I do not have that in this budget because that is, we've had some very high health claims and I don't want to use that health fund balance for that. I want to leave it there for future claims in our health fund. The other item is using $607,000 from the unrestricted general fund, fund balance. We're not doing that, but we did budget $300,000 in attrition savings in this budget where we don't typically budget for attrition savings, but we thought that we could easily achieve $300,000 for that. And so, but that's on the expenditure side, you're not going to see that on the revenue side.
But now, we are still obligated to have 16.5% reserves.
Yes.
And these numbers that you pulled out. And these numbers that you pulled out.
They don't, it doesn't affect that number whatsoever. This, now, even though that was in the budget for FY twenty-three, I don't think we're gonna have to do it. We're not gonna have to take any money out of the health fund or the fund balance. It was a placeholder in that budget, but we have, as you saw, higher revenues in sales and meal taxes. As long as the year ends with those numbers still being above budget, we will not have to take these transfers from the health fund or the fund balance, so.
And therefore, in that case, there's another million dollars. Correct?
Well, we.
There's four hundred thousand plus six hundred and seven thousand.
That we just won't have to transfer to the general fund.
The four hundred will stay in the health fund.
Yeah, it will stay in the health fund, yeah.
They were needs to be.
But does it need to be in the health fund or is the health fund fully funded at sixteen point five?
They're talking about higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when you pulled out the four hundred thousand, did that affect the health fund at all?
Well, we won't have to pull it out. It was budgeted, but we will not have to do it because revenues are coming in higher than what they were budgeted in twenty-three.
It was just used as a budget balancing mechanism last year. That's all. But we still have to rec, we're not doing it in twenty-four. That's why that, that number is showing up in red, correct?
Yeah, but we were short in all these other areas. Everything in the red.
Yes, that is correct.
The Commonwealth and, uh, and the federal government cut back money they were sending us.
That relates mostly to, um, social services, um, CSA, things like that through the Health Department. Those expenses have went down for the city of Stanton. You'll see corresponding expenses on the expenditure sides for those items that went down. And these are the revenues that support them.
Hey, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It is a good thing. I don't think we'll see much more savings than that, but for now, that we're, that's we're recognizing some savings.
And you may be curious what that negative is under the current service charges. And that is a result of our indirect cost allocation. Where we take, we charge the stormwater fund and the sewer fund and the water fund for services that are in the general fund. The biggest impact was engineering services, um, did not spend as much time on stormwater development of those projects. And so a lot of those payments in lieu of taxes for the stormwater, the parking, the water and the sewer fund went down this year. And that's what those are. Those are internal charges from one fund to another.
So the four million is the difference between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four budget, the revenues. So.
It is.
That's an increase.
It is an increase of six point two percent. Slide five is an overview of our general fund expenditures. Um, I want to direct your attention to the top three increases for FY twenty-four. The first is the increase in the debt service. This is a big increase that's in this proposed FY twenty-four budget. And it covers our entire existing general fund debt service. And it also covers two hundred and thirty-two thousand of the, um, debt service that we're projecting. That we'll have to issue during FY twenty-four for the J D R courthouse relocation. Now, the two hundred and thirty-two thousand is not the entire amount. That will leave about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars that would be taken out of the debt service sinking fund balance. And this will all vary depending on what the debt issue is, like how much the principal is, when it happens. And, um, variables like that. Like, we don't know at this point in time what our debt service would be because it will depend on when it's issued and when the first payment is due. But the estimate that we used in our FY twenty-four budget was a ten million dollar principal over twenty years. Five and a half percent interest from those, because we had to use something to prepare the budget.
About eight hundred million.
It's about eight hundred and two thousand per year of debt service.
Say that again, eight hundred?
Eight hundred, two thousand per year of new debt service on a ten million dollar principal over twenty years.
Whatever we already paying.
So the education increase has already been discussed. Um, I'll get them to a little more detail on public safety on the next slide. So we can go ahead in advance to slide six. The regional jail, detention center and animal shelter, all three are increasing for FY twenty-four. Effectively, they account for an increase in our general fund of five hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars. Our expenditures for the regional jail are increasing due to our share of the population increasing. They had, they did not have a large budget increase this year. I think it might have actually decreased. But our share of the population increased, which means we got a bigger share of the cost, unfortunately.
So when you say that increases, that means that more people are being incarcerated.
Yes.
It's from Stanton. So do we have any, I, I know that's not part of the budget, but do we have any idea what that, what the increase consists of?
I do not, do you, Leslie?
It doesn't have to do with individuals as much as where the crimes committed.
Right. Right, it doesn't necessarily mean that from Stanton, but the crime was committed in Stanton, so.
Comes to stay in the expense.
Um, our share for the detention center, oh, go ahead. Our share for the detention center is increasing to our population increasing there. And the end of the O R R federal program with the S V J D C. That is another area where if the assault is, it happens in Stanton, like at one of the, um, locations here. We are responsible, even though the child, like one of the examples, it was from West Virginia. But we are responsible because the facility was located in Stanton where the assault occurred.
What's, what's the O R R stand for?
Office of.
Relocation.
Refugee resettlement.
Yeah, refugee, yeah.
That's the federal program that the.
One hundred percent done, completed.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
And it was about two million in revenue to the center. And so we're gonna have to over time. All the localities will absorb that. So we're only absorbing a portion of it in twenty-four. And we'll absorb another portion of it in twenty-five.
Yeah, so the detention center is using about thirty-five percent of their fund balance to help localities offset this cost. I think they'll, they'll try to use a step down portion of that next year to help ease into the, the full amount. But unfortunately, because our population increased, we do have a significant increase this year for the detention center.
Is that facility at capacity now that they've pulled all the fed, federal people out of there?
For the detention center?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do not believe it is near capacity.
There's a lot of people there that, um, are not getting into the court system in a timely fashion. So that means that we are paying to keep them in there. And, and me and Michelle had talked about the possibility of, uh, of, uh.
Of monitoring?
Mon, yeah, monitoring and, and possibly, uh, we'd have to talk to, uh, the magistrates probably. Because they, they get them first.
Well, that's on the adult side. On the juvenile side, it's, it's different.
Right.
And there's more, like, they do, there's timelines. They have to get before.
Right.
And the last item on this slide is the regional animal shelter. It's an increase of a little over eighty-nine thousand. That increase is to help stabilize and improve operations of the shelter.
This is all gonna be added this year.
This is all for FY twenty-four.
Next year.
These five items, um, just them together, account for sixty-four percent of that additional four million dollars revenue. So it's a, it's a large percent with just those five.
That was like ten, it was twenty, twenty-two point six million.
You said out of the four point four million that is over from twenty twenty-three, this accounts.
What's lower four million, but it's sixty-four percent of it is those five things. Yeah.
Two points.
Slide seven summarizes proposed changes for personnel. Personnel expenditures, um, account for approximately thirty-eight percent of our general fund budget. We're proposing a five percent COLA and our reasons why are as follows. The pay and compensation study for the city that we conducted, um, and got the results in December suggested a five percent COLA for FY twenty-four. And as you can see on the slide, that is also the rec, the proposed amounts for the state of Virginia. And many of the surrounding localities are proposing at least a five percent COLA with a couple going up to six percent. We feel strongly that we need the five percent COLA to be competitive in the labor market. Anything less will put us further behind where we currently are. The next bullet point is the amount in the proposed budget that was recommended from the pay and compensation study. To bring certain employees to the minimum pay level when you compare them to the market. I think it's also important to mention that some of the five percent COLA, um, that we're suggesting. Also plays a role in getting some employees to their, their minimum, um, when you compare them to market in the study. Um, I've already mentioned the three hundred thousand dollars that we built in for attrition savings. And we're projecting at this time a ten percent increase in our health insurance cost. And for the first time in a few years, we'll also be passing some of that increase on to our employees, unfortunately. We have maintained flat rates for employees over the last few years, but unfortunately, we cannot do that any longer due to rising health costs. This rate increase would take place on January first, twenty twenty-four. Now, as you know, we have recent, recently switched, um, insurance carriers to Anthem, um, this past January first. So it could be that as we collect more data over the next few months and see how those claims are going. That, um, it could change some, uh, health insurance rates are not set to the, until the fall. But at this time, we're working with a ten percent increase for this budget.
But what would that work out for, for the employees? Is that?
The most expensive plan, um, which is the POS family plan, is about three hundred and eight dollars a month. So it's.
Take a big chunk of their five, it would take a big chunk of their five percent.
About fifteen dollars more.
Yeah, for paycheck, about fifty some.
For the most expensive plan. So we have, we have different plans depending. So that's the most.
With a five percent increase, when you look at inflation and everything like that, it probably, you're still in, you're still in the hole. So it's, uh, it's kinda, it's kinda sad when you, you know, with all the bills that you have to pay. And, you know, even when you get an increase, you just see it ate up.
So the last, um, bullet point shows the new position, um, proposed for FY twenty-four. There is one in the general fund right now, um, in the proposed budget. This is very similar to the position that was eliminated, um, in twenty seventeen. Um, then it was called the director planning. This position we're proposing is in the general fund is the director community development, which would oversee building, planning, zoning and those areas. The other two positions are in the water fund in order to satisfy state requirements in our water treatment plant. We need to add four additional staff over the next two fiscal years. We are proposing to add two this year and another two in FY twenty twenty-five. And the next three slides are an overview of our twenty twenty-four general fund C I P, uh, which totals five point five million dollars. The eight hundred and fifty that you see there was funded using FY twenty-two carryover. A few months back on one of our budget amendments, the improvements to the Churchill Avenue are planned to be funded with money that's already in the C I P reserves. And hopefully, um, part of it will come from the V dot grant. Also added the V dot grant for the pedestrian infrastructure improvements. We were notified about this award last month. So we're re, receiving one million, one hundred eleven thousand, five twenty-four for improvements to pedestrian, um, infrastructure. The remaining amounts, um, will need to be funded with FY twenty-three carryover since we have eliminated the C I P from the proposed twenty-four budget. The total amount of carryover needed to be funded for the FY twenty-four general fund capital plan is two million, one hundred eighty-six thousand and fifty dollars. I believe it's also just as important to talk about what's not in this budget. As we just discussed, the C I P is the largest single item that's not being funded in the proposed, um, budget. This is the third time in the last four years that we have not funded it in the general fund, C I P out of our operations. Now, while I fully believe that we'll have the carryover this year to fund it, I'm afraid that we're getting ourselves into a position. That it's gonna be hard to bring it back to fund it out of our normal operations. Because we're kinda getting used to not funding it and funding it with carryover. But like I said, twenty-four, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. So it should be fine, eliminate it this year and funding it with carryover. Slide twelve lists the unfunded personnel related requests. Um, oh. Yes, this is just, um, you could go to the next slide.
Okay.
So like I said, the only position that we have in the budget this time for the general fund is that director community development. These or various positions that were requested by departments during the budgeting process. That we are unfunded at this point in time. Um, in addition to, we have not, um, proposed funding for the V R S hazardous duty multiplier. That was requested by the police department and the fire department. We just did not feel like this was the year that we could implement that, um, and take on that additional cost. I do want to mention that we have made significant strides, however, in pay and compensation for fire and police. And bringing up those minimum starting pays, um, to become comparable to what our peers are doing. Slide thirteen and fourteen is where I've listed the unfunded equipment requests. This is mostly vehicle requests and part maintenance equipment. We don't have any new funded equipment in our, the twenty-four budget at this time.
What's the average age of some of this equipment? I mean, what do we expect it to last and?
I could get that information for you. I don't have it off the top of my head. I mean, we did, like, police cruisers were taken out of the FY twenty-three budget too. But I believe that they, they were funded with carryover money last year, so.
And we replaced the ones we lost in the first, right?
Yes, I believe so. You'll also notice on slide fourteen that the hundred thousand dollars for the comprehensive plan is unfunded at this time. This request will be revisited when we have discussion on the FY twenty-three carryover. But at this point, it is not funded in this proposed budget. The debt sinking fund number is the amount on the budgeted debt service that will be funded out of debt service sinking fund balance. As a reminder, this is planned debt issuance at this point that we believe will be happening in FY twenty-four related to the J D R relocation. And there's not anything definitive at this point. It's a plan.
So some of these things that's unfunded from the carryover from twenty twenty-three will.
I will bring those back before you, um, late next fall. It will be a while before we have that number.
Four and a half extra coming out.
I have a question on this one thing. On page twelve, this last one, where general government, it's a three hundred thousand. That, you put it in on one side and you took it out on the other.
Um, it's just a reduction on the expenditure side. Um, we believe that we can fund that amount through open positions and. When people either quit and it takes, it takes a while to get somebody hired in that position. So usually throughout the year, we'll, we'll recognize some type of savings through open positions.
I do have one question about the, um, something that's funded. The three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand for the fire truck reserve. Is that basically what will go in every year? Is that what was proposed to go in every year?
Yes.
But aren't they getting two new fire trucks?
Yes.
So do they have to go in, in twenty twenty-four?
Um, it's already been done, um, and that was part of what's helping to bring them to a positive balance. They were running a negative balance. But yeah, anything that is left over, um, you certainly have the discretion to apply that somewhere else, but.
How much is it short now?
Uh, it's not short now. I believe these last budget amendments, it is now a positive number.
Positive or?
I don't know if the whole three hundred is, or if it's two something. I would have to let you know that number. I don't have it off the top of my head.
So that could be used for something else?
If we decided to pause that, yes.
But it would be after this year. Yeah, FY twenty-four is done, right? Or twenty-three?
Um, raised, okay.
Three is done. Well, the twenty-four funding.
Yeah.
It was funded with carryout.
Right.
So that eight hundred fifty thousand has already been funded, the, the first slide on the C I P session, uh, section. But yes, you do have the discretion to move it. And then finally, um, looking forward to some important items in Stanton's future. This is not an all inclusive list, but more like some of the highlights. Uh, I want to let you know the Harrisonburg Rockingham Jail, regional jail buyout will end in FY twenty twenty-five. This was a ten-year agreement, um, for which we have two fiscal years remaining. Starting in FY twenty-six, Stanton will lose approximately six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenue because this agreement is ending. The next two items relate to the construction and operating costs of the J D R court. There's still many unknowns here. As to how much the relocation of those facilities will actually cost. And we've all heard about the M S four requirements that are looming over our head. Um, and others that I want to mention are the west end revitalization, union town infrastructure improvements. Greenways and pedestrian in, infrastructure, public safety and other governmental space needs. And future capital needs for schools, um, one of which is the need for the consolidated operations facility, which you heard about recently. Um, and this concludes my overview and I want to turn it back over to you for questions.
I've, I've got a question on the, uh, the CAD system. I, I thought that thing was, um.
Eight for.
Eight hundred, eight hundred thousand?
We're funding over multiple years.
Okay, so, so that's.
I, I believe we're funding it over two years maybe.
But it was eight thousand, it wasn't.
Yes, it's eight hundred thousand, I believe.
Eight hundred thousand.
Wasn't it a four million dollar project and some of it got funded out of ARPA?
The CAD system? Are you talking about the emergency communication? CAD system is different.
But they tie in together. They, they because it'll make it easier for firemen and, and policemen. They'll know all the, all the things that are going on before they get to a site. Supposedly.
The CAD system may be over three years.
Does this system, Chad, does it allow police and fire to better cross talk, communicate with each other?
They can't hear you when they go into the wall.
We have a CAD in RMS, which is Records Management System now, but it's the same one we've had for over twenty years now, so it's just outdated technology. So it would just be replacing that technology. The CAD system is the computer aided dispatch, which allows our dispatchers to monitor police, fire and rescue and, you know, communicate with them. And it's also a data storage solution.
Okay, and but now the, the four million dollar, I'm just trying to in my mind because I know there's so many dead spots.
Talking about the radio project, which is completely separate.
Totally separate, but I mean, will that start eliminating a lot of the dead spots? Like you go down eleven things around that you're, I mean, there's a lot.
It's my understanding that it, that it will fill in some of the gaps and coverage there.
Okay, good.
And this is also able to not only communicate citywide, but also with the, with the county and in Wayne's.
The radios, yes, sir. Yeah, that's a regional project.
Thank you.
Just for your information, CAD is eight hundred and fifty thousand. It's projected to be overfunded over three fiscal years with one hundred thousand dollars in twenty four and then three hundred and seventy five thousand in twenty five and again in twenty six.
When are they planning on putting it in?
I think once it's funded, they will start that process.
Is it possible that maybe not this year, but next year, take the fire engine money and put it towards that?
I don't see why not, yeah.
Was it to help all of them and help everybody?
I thought all excess was being earmarked for JD and Court.
That was excess ARPA.
I think you're talking about fire truck.
He's trying about the reserves and the CIP, yeah.
Yeah.
What about the slide about the? Talks about how to participate, sure. So.
I've got one more question too. Will our rates for the jail go up once? I mean, we're getting that money from Harrisonburg, but what we're paying now will be what we'd be.
Yes.
We just won't be getting the extra money from them.
That is correct. So we have two more years of that FY twenty four and FY twenty five, and then in twenty six, we'll have to be paired. That revenue will decrease.
But that's also going to drop the overall amount of inmates, correct? Because I mean, Harrisonburg won't be putting inmates.
Yes, they, they.
I believe that they, they, that was just their buy-in to get into the jail along with Stanton.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is that going to be all redone? I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to find out about that. I just don't know. Talking about the agreement and everything, I would think so.
It would still be based on the number of people that from each, each area too.
Yeah.
That's another area where we got, need to do some updating also, I imagine.
Yeah, they have some, the jail capital. Yeah, they have some things planned in the future. The first couple of years, I believe, is coming out of their fund balance and then there could be a debt issuance down the road, but nothing in our immediate future.
Any other questions about the budget right now? We're gonna look at the budget history in a minute and if you think of other questions. But just quickly, we've got another work session next week as part of the regular meeting and then a work session on the twentieth, which is at seven thirty. It's a little later because of our planning commission. And then budget adoption is the twenty seventh, and we could have obviously a quick work session before that budget adoption as well. And then there's one more public hearing next Thursday on the proposed budget overall. Any other questions before we move on?
Moving along.
Moving on, alright.
So the last agenda item is we're comparing the FY fourteen to twenty four budget figures, and I thought it would be useful for you guys and frankly for myself, because this is my first budget cycle, to see how we have gotten to the point of a hundred and fifty two million dollar budget. The first thing I want to point out is the bottom line figure of one hundred and fifty two million includes all city and all school funds. And therefore, any transfers between funds are double counted and you'll see a few examples of those as I walk you through the slides. I'm going to highlight the five biggest reasons for this increase and then briefly list the remaining on the final slide that wraps it all up. The largest driver is inflation. Local governments are not immune to inflation. And the cumulative inflation rate from fiscal fourteen to twenty four is twenty nine point one percent. And I applied this inflation rate to our fourteen budget with the exception of debt and capital projects. And the results show that it's about forty seven percent of the amount and equates to about twenty four point two million dollars. Now, while that's a large number, that still leaves twenty seven and a half million dollars. That is still a very significant number. So the second largest driver is our capital projects in the enterprise fund. This number has grown by a little over fourteen million and it's about twenty seven percent of the increase from fourteen to twenty four. We have several large capital projects right now in our twenty four budget for the water, sewer, stormwater and environmental funds, all of which are either grant funded or funded with the fund balance in the respective enterprise fund. The next increase is in schools. Go for it a couple, yeah. And again, so the school budget increase between fourteen and twenty four outpaced the twenty nine point one percent inflation rate. Education is an area that has a transfer between funds, so keep that in mind that some of those dollars are being double counted. The city's contribution to schools increased forty four percent during that timeframe. The peers in the general fund. In addition, if you take a look at the education fund alone, the expense for the education fund has increased fifty one percent from fiscal year fourteen to twenty four, which is above the inflation rate that we used. You'll notice as we move through the next couple of slides that education and public safety are two areas that the city has really prioritized over the last decade. I want to touch on debt service too. The city's debt service has increased from FY fourteen by five point three million when you look at the total city budget. This is mainly the debts associated with the renovation of the high school. And you'll see part of the increase in the general fund. This is where we're transferring from the general fund to fund the debt service. And then you'll see it again appear in the debt service sinking fund. This is a perfect example of doubling up that I mentioned earlier because the debt service on that is not, it's not the, the five point three is actually a little over two million dollars for the debt service on that. The next largest factor, explain the large increase in the city's share is the regional jail funding. In FY fourteen, our share of the jails expenses was seven hundred thousand dollars. And the FY twenty four proposed budget is three million, two hundred and eighty six thousand, three eighteen. To me, that is, that is a huge number that has, it has more than quadrupled, I mean, since then. If you're keeping track of the math, those things add up to more than one hundred percent. And that's because there are multiple lines that have decreased. Another one I want to point out there, right below the regional jail, is the public safety. That's a, that's a pretty significant number. After, that one point nine million is after I allowed for inflation. And there, fire was a big part of that. We had added three FTEs, I believe. Let's see. We added three FTEs in twenty sixteen and then we had added three in FY nineteen that were part of the safer grant that are now one hundred percent funded out of our general fund. So that's an addition of nine FTEs in fire when you compare fourteen to twenty four. So some of the the negatives, let's see, water and sewer operations, those are some pretty big negative numbers there. That does not mean it costs less now to run our water and sewer operations. What, in twenty fourteen, we were budgeting for some pretty big depreciation numbers in that budget. And it was used to help build up the fund balances there. But now we're to the point where we can't afford to fund for depreciation out of those funds. We have held our sewer rates steady for twelve years and our water rate has been held steady for four years. And so we're to the point where we can't budget for depreciation and the operations using that same revenue. And then you'll notice that the, the city, the CIP there, that's a big negative when you look at fourteen versus twenty twenty four. I found this exercise extremely helpful in understanding what has caused some of the increases and where we're spending our money. And that concludes everything that I wanted to go through. I just wanted to know if you have any more questions on this or the budget in general and.
I'd just like to make a statement. One thing I wish we would do is water and sewer every year instead of doing it every two or four or five years because it goes up five or ten percent. But that really isn't very much money, but when you say five or ten percent, people look at it like, oh my God. You know, and if we did this every year, if the money, we could always use every little extra penny we get and then it wouldn't, wouldn't, people wouldn't notice it. And it's not that you're trying to be sneaky or nothing, but it just, you know, when you raise something five or ten percent. I was on council and I think we raised it, uh, went up like seven or eight percent and, and it's because it hadn't been raised in, in four, four or five years and people just freaked out.
And the water fund is one where we definitely need to increase rates, but we had the pandemic and then we, this is not a good year to raise it this year, so we just have decided to not propose that this year.
Um, one thing on the ARPA money that came in, it has to be, it's, it's federal money. It's not being collected from local citizens here in the city. But it has to get into the budget. And is that in this enterprise fund capital projects? Is that how it gets?
It was put into the twenty three budget through a budget amendment.
But that adds to our overall budget.
These are the original adopted budgets that I'm comparing, not, we don't take into account any amendments that have happened after the original budget.
Good.
And that's special grant funding that we.
It is not even mentioned.
No, I don't think so.
That's what, that was.
Yeah, the biggest, the biggest capital projects that we have, of course, is the sewer at the crossing, which is practically one hundred percent grant funded. And then we have a budget in here for the water at the crossing, which at this point in time, we're really hoping that we can get fifty percent grant funded and fund balance for the rest because I don't believe the fund balance in the water fund can handle the whole crossing project.
And that's about five point two million for the water tower and two million for the water lines.
Yeah.
Roughly.
And the sewer, I believe, is a little over four and a half million.
But that's been handled.
The sewer, yes.
If we can, until we get that stuff in, we can't really sell the property, you know, because, I mean, we can, but I mean.
You're for.
It's kind of the.
Well, the other side of that is, you know.
Horse before the cart before the horse, you know.
You sort of customize it to who the owner might be and what they're going to need. You, you customize it as opposed to producing a generic product that we don't know whether it's going to be utilized or not.
So we're gonna have to have the water tower just because water pressure for the, it'll affect the water pressure for that whole side of town. That affect fire effect.
Yeah, I, um, a couple of things. I, I just want to understand the jail and you made the statement, that's a big number. Where does this budget request increase about three million, two eight?
Oh, that was between fourteen and twenty four.
Stand, that's quite a big, I mean, is that, where's all that come from? I mean.
Treasury.
Was it part, how much of it was inflation and how much of it was actually?
Can you go back to that slide?
Salaries is, yeah.
Probably have to dig into.
I would have to do a deep dive into their budget.
Yeah, that's two, three, eight, two.
That two, three, eight, two is after I've accounted. That's in excess of inflation.
Okay.
In order for me to know where it came from, I would have to.
Need to look at their budgets, yeah.
Well, I just know in dealing with them over the years, they, God, they always want so many things. It's crazy. I mean, you know, it's.
Yeah.
That was a very surprising number to me.
Alright, and then one other question. The education fund increased fifty, you said that was just, I mean, totally out of, you know, is that because of the, the debt fund for the, the high school?
No, the, the debt does not run, the debt is on the, in the debt service sinking fund that's funded with general fund money. This is just straight education fund, which is instruction. It doesn't include cafeteria or the.
The salaries.
It is all of education fund.
And so far, is is school board, are they happy with what they're seeing in the numbers that we presented that they agreed to last year?
Yes.
Okay, I, I like hearing that. Okay.
Been a good year for that.
What would you like us, what would you like us to prep for next week? So we can come in with an idea of what you all would like to see.
Well, I think it's, uh, interesting that Wayne's World came in with a seventy nine cent proposed tax rate.
And increased salaries.
Same five percent as we did.
Yeah, they're about just going up, I believe, eight point three percent compared to our six point two.
Six point two.
A lot of it is in sales and meals tax. They're about one point nine million dollars ahead of us.
Well, and I guess that's.
Well, didn't they get a big settlement from DuPont too?
Overall budgets, what, sixty?
Sixty two.
Nine, sixty two.
Parts of sixty nine, there's sixty two.
So, I mean, we're close. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not going to be.
We're not ten cents apart.
Yeah, it's, it's the distribution between sales and meals tax and property tax.
And I guess the point has been that, you know, in twenty two, we came in six point five million over twenty twenty three. We're forecasting a four and a half million dollar overage. And we're spending it. I know we're going to handle our CIP out of overage and, and we're spending it. I'm not saying that, but it seems to me the analogy should be made to the the teenager that comes up to his dad and says, Dad, I'm going out Saturday night. I need some money. And if you give him twenty dollars, you're never going to see that twenty dollars again. It's gone. And, and you don't want to necessarily run a city on, I might need to give him some money down the line. If he has an expense, we need to deal with that expense. And I mean, we don't have anything against funding things and I'm very happy to see that the educational system thing is seemingly been worked out, but when we miss budgets by four and a half million, by six and a half million, I think we need to be a little leaner.
But you're looking to at two years of COVID and nobody knew what to expect and we.
COVID, COVID was prior. Co- COVID was the year before that. I mean, that's going way back. The COVID dilemma was in twenty and then twenty one year. But I'm talking about twenty two and twenty three, we've we have underestimated our revenue in the last two years pretty significantly. And I do not see where our revenue comparison here has corrected much. We're still in line with where we were back in those days. And, and I think that if we were to do a Wayne's Borough and forecast our revenues a little bit higher.
We're doing it back exactly what Wayne's Borough is doing. Their revenues for FY twenty four is what their FY twenty two actuals were.
Well, it just seems to be more dollars in there than.
I think it's just more dollars. I mean, they have the target and they have those areas.
And they got fast food road, they got all this.
The methodology, Miss Moyes explained is exactly the same. They just have more than we do. And that's literally how they're making up the difference.
And realize it's a, it's a smaller, smaller city.
Smaller city, less people.
And, I mean, and they're not saddled with Stanton crossings. I mean, you know, and they've got it developed and, and it, it makes us in a hurry to get rid of the one point two million dollars we're spending every year to for debt relief that's going out there to Stanton crosses and to. for debt relief that's going out there to Stanton Crosses and to get that property productive for the city.
That's another reason why we shouldn't cut things to the bone, because we're gonna need the money to do, put in the services so we can sell that property. But I got another question for you, Jesse. When we were talking about the jail additional education funding. You know, you said those were about twenty two point six million increase.
Sixty four percent of the four million dollars.
Yes, and then and then when you add in the pay increases, that brings it up to about three mil. Is this gonna be? This is gonna be an every year thing, right? So that's gonna be three mil of the four mil that we should be over. Am I being wrong there?
Um. Three million would be about a that would be less than a five percent growth in your budget, but yeah.
Saying if we are projecting a four mil overage, and but we've got these this three mil that we're gonna have to account for, right?
Yes.
So that make it actually around roughly a million that we might, if we're lucky, have left over.
Um, let's budget it for other things, but yeah. In the FY twenty.
I just I don't want people to think that that's gonna be four million that's there sitting there. A lot of that money is already spoken for or will be spoken for through the year.
It has to be spoken for. Yeah, I mean. You asked what?
Well.
Be interested in.
Like to know what to plan for for the next week's budget work session.
You want a rate?
Wait, I can't read that. Are you showing me something?
Looks like a dollar eighty six. It looks like a dollar.
Eighty six.
We've gone from ninety two to eighty nine. Can we go to eighty six and you show us what what's gonna be changed?
I prefer I prefer to leave it at ninety two to be honest.
I know you do.
Well, I'm telling you, I'd rather I'd rather be a naysayer, and then we put that money back into the funds at the end of the year than.
They're still rammed.
Well, I mean, to to drop it like that, we talked about specific line items being tied to cents on that. And we we discussed that maybe it's not the time to move ahead with moxie until we corner the primary users of it into more enthusiastically financially supporting it. We'd also talked about how we just gave two million dollars of new equipment to the fire department as well, so we could pause that. I have no intention of doing away with it, but we're a little ahead in in actual equipment, and that's three cents right there.
Mr. Arrow, none of that actually helps you balance the budget, though. That was all ARPA one-time money.
Yeah.
So that is not, we would not know the two hundred thousand.
Maybe could do it on the.
Yeah, the two hundred thousand for design came out of ARPA. The two million for the fire trucks came out of ARPA. We would never balance a budget with that one-time money, so. You're talking about the three fifty?
Yes.
That's already been.
Already been eliminated in its entirety.
It would be down the road like two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, moving forward, if we want to talk about.
Six hundred thousand in there for moxie next year.
But that's coming out.
It's not in. It's not funded out of this general fund. The CIP has been eliminated.
But you do have the three hundred thousand for the fire.
But it's not in this budget.
It's not in this budget.
No, there's no CIP in this budget.
So you can't cut the CIP and and save dollars that way.
Okay, I got you. We're gonna fund it out of.
That will be a discussion.
Correct.
Later, later.
Well, can can you come? I mean, can you come back and show us what what a budget looks like at eighty six? I mean, I'm just making that request.
Where would we we cut?
Well, that's I'm asking the city manager to do.
It's not America. It's it's just not expanding it as big.
Well, I I think that that's how they got to eighty nine was they cut things that they they eliminated positions and they.
There's a lot of unfunded. There's unfunded requests. There's no positions eliminated. No city services are cut right now, so I just want to make that clear.
Right.
It's just not funded.
Right.
Okay, so that's I just don't want that to be confusing confusing concept out there. That's about what almost nine hundred thousand dollars for three cents.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, what would be?
Eighty seven times three.
Yeah.
I mean, what what would be areas that you would look that would?
That's.
That's what we're asking.
Would you would you cut like horticulture? Would you?
I think we'll come back with a menu of options for you all. Okay, that would be. I hear I see a lot of head nods.
I want a margarita on my menu.
On the rocks.
No salt.
What rate are we? Eighty six.
Eighty six? Okay, because I thought I heard eighty come out of your mouth.
They said eighty six.
So I would like to see eighty seven.
I'd and I'd like to.
Well, again, we'll come back with the menu of options that break it down per penny.
So at what you're gonna start at the eighty nine, which is your proposed, and you're gonna go down to eighty six.
You'll see the different options as it goes down to the three extra cents. So you'll see eighty seven, you'll see eighty eight.
Kills me is when you think about it. It's only two hundred and eighty. When you spread that around, it's not a, I mean, it's not a lot of money per citizen. You know, and and but yet it puts us in a stronger position financially as a government. And that's what I worry about is if you spend the money, if you spend, if you don't put the money. We're just like people. I mean, the city is like, I mean, it's an entity. It's got to have funds to function. And 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 y'all banking on everything being hunky dory all the way. And I I don't know, maybe it's because I'm in the restaurant center. Businesses, it's never hunky dory. You never know when things are gonna flip the other way.
But Terry, at the same time. Fiscal twenty three was one hundred and forty two million. This proposed budget budget is one hundred and fifty two million. There's no cutting involved. There's a plus ten million dollars. So let's look at which one of those ten million dollars can we possibly eliminate? And all we're talking about is one million out of the ten million to eliminate. If we're, because if we were go from this past year, one forty.
Jesse, what was the rate of inflation last year?
Uh, I don't. I thought it was six or seven. I don't remember.
Social Security goal.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
When do we have to start dealing with the stormwater thing? That's gonna be what, two million a year? Was that?
No, so the study is being done right now, and that we're, once we're done with the budget. I believe the summer and the fall will start looking at that more, and and I believe we're also gonna look at the water as well at the same time and kind of package that together. So I we don't that I don't have that answer for you, but that's what the study that's being done right now is going to show you all in terms of what the rates should be, and it's probably gonna give you, again, I use the word menu, again, a menu of options in terms of what's required to be done versus what the rates need to be.
Isn't that the fourteen tier system?
Something like that. Yeah, we've got a got a strange system.
Yes.
Indeed, so.
And you give us this menu. Are you? How are you? What are what's your thoughts as to how you're gonna do that? Are you gonna look at? Okay, well, if I go to eighty eight cents, you know, these are the things I'm gonna cut. If I go to eighty seven cents, I mean, because I don't want, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to see like, you know, part-time positions cut on people.
No, that's not the way. What we're gonna do is what are we not going to expand quite as much?
Right. Where are we gonna like shrink versus, you know?
Cut.
Cut.
Shrink, not cut.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going up. We're increasing by nine million. So I I don't think we can look at like we're cutting.
We're only talking about the general fund right now.
Yeah, we're only talking about the general fund. We're not. Yeah, you're trying to balance, keep the general fund.
General fund is four million dollar increase, six point two percent.
To be fair, yeah.
That's fair.
We we will. We will have options for you all, so and we'll do our best to, you know, provide some things that are palatable if all of you all want to agree to an additional cut rate, cut, cut to the rate. So how about that?
Very fair.
I think that's good.
Any last minute comments from council?
Just that, I mean, I'm I'm definitely all for exploring a further rate cut on this, but it would. Has it ever been in the eighties?
Never.
And and for cities, and we can show you this next week, for cities, it's low. And I'm not, you know, it's just factual. I mean, cities are usually higher than counties, for instance, because cities are set up very differently than counties in Virginia. We're providing full services, whereas counties aren't doing their streets, and they may not have a police department, and that, you know, there's certain things that we are doing that counties aren't doing. So you'll typically see higher rates for counties, I mean, lower rates for counties for that reason. As far as cities, if we're we're already in, we're gonna be in the eighties, it's pretty low. I mean, a lot of cities are above a dollar. Usually they're in the nineties.
Charlottesville are above a dollar.
Mm hmm. And then if you go to Northern Virginia Hampton Roads, you're looking at a dollar twenty, you know, and those are way up there. I think Harrisonburg is ninety three.
Which is, you know, massively larger than us. They were at ninety nine, I think.
Yeah, so it varies depending on their needs, but.
All all records I've seen for Stanton is never been
Believe so.
Under ninety. It's between ninety and a dollar.
That is a page in your budget book.
Yes.
It was over a dollar at one point in time.
It's a dollar.
A dollar four or something like that. When I came on council, I think it was ninety.
Page seventy two, it was as high as a dollar ten, and that was in the the nineties. And then it came down to like ninety six, ninety, and then it went back up to ninety five, ninety.
What page is that?
Page seventy two.
Interesting. All right, anything further? Well, thanks staff again for all the work they've done on this.
Thanks for your input. If you have any other questions, please email us. And we'll try to.
Thanks staff for their work.
Again, very good.
I know we're being a pain.
No, you're not. No, you're not. All right.
Well, I just don't want I don't want to see cuts in places like the library or, you know, or.
More money this year than last year.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This work session is adjourned.